Welcome everybody to the Huntington Board of Education meeting for March 1st, 2021. Welcome and can I? Could I have a motion to open the meeting please? That's Kelly and a second from Xavier. All in favor? Thank you. And now may I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss employee matters and collective bargaining with district units? That's a motion from Kelly and a second from Linda. All in favor? Everyone, thank you. We'll be back at 7:30.
I'm gonna pause the recording at this time.
It does say red up at the top. Welcome back everyone to tonight's Board of Education meeting. We are going to adjourn our executive session and resume the public session. Could I have a motion please?
Motion.
And a second from Xavier. All in favor? Hi. That's everybody. Okay, can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. Indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. So we are at our bedrooms tonight, so the board and other people in the room, please take note of the exits and refrain from smoking. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the minutes transcription from the meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated February 8th, 2021. Could I have a motion?
Motion from Linda.
From Kelly and a second from Linda. All in favor? Hi. Everyone? We have a few FYIs, the budget transfers and the claims audit reports. Anybody?
Just be reminded that the volume of budget transfers this year is considerably more significant under the current pandemic circumstances than with some of the fiscal constraints that we're facing. So that's why you see more than you have in years past. And as mentioned, the claims audit reports, I've been putting those on regularly as well, in the essence of transparency.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the January 2021 treasurer's report. Do I have a motion please? From Bill and a second from Xavier. All in favor? That's everyone. And it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the attached warrants which were certified for payment on September 17th, 2021. Do I have a motion? Michelle and a second from Kelly. All in favor? That's everyone with Linda. Thank you. I should point out that we're all here and Mrs. Deanna is at home on Zoom. Okay, do we have any board member communications or? Alright, well, we're gonna hear lots of exciting presentations tonight, so we'll get our fill there. Mr. Polanski?
Just a couple of things that I believe some are on the agenda already, but just to clarify a few points that have come up. We are still struggling to a degree with differences among CDC, state and county guidance with respect to how we're addressing some of our educational and COVID health related. I can address some of that during the dedicated item in the, on the items for discussion agenda, but just to kind of throw that out there in advance because this is probably gonna continue for the next couple of weeks if nothing else. I do believe that the state is gonna make some changes in the next few days, within a week, two weeks, to keep up with some of the changes that the CDC has recommended, but that remains to be seen. And also, it is a a couple of things that come up with respect to testing and vaccination. I know that there have been executive orders saying one thing, then an executive order comes out saying another thing, but we are still working our hardest to facilitate getting our staff vaccinated, for those who wish to vaccinate as quickly as possible. As far as, again, we're gonna address budget tonight, but it also looks like we are on the precipice of another significant federal funding stimulus package that may do more in the way of assisting education K through 12 across the country and of course support education in New York State as part of that. For those who have been following, to give you an update on the federal and state assessment and accountability processes, the current administration has indicated that there will be no blanket waivers in terms of canceling spring assessments, three through eight, four regions exams. With that said, I do believe that Commissioner of the New York State Education Department is committed to working with our local educational agencies in New York, including Huntington, to allow us to move forward in a manner that that makes sense under current circumstances. Right now, there is a lot of confusion with respect to this. How do you administer assessments to those who are fully remote? What happens with the accountability process? But I do believe that some of the changes that will be announced at the upcoming regions meetings, I believe in the middle of this month, month of March, that will address some of these issues directly and will provide needed flexibility for school districts to handle this in the right way. I do believe that there are many across the country who believe that assessments are necessary in terms of providing data that can help us to work best with individual students and students in specific grade levels. However, the concern is, is that data going to really provide something useful where you have students in many different circumstances, some of whom have been fully remote for the entire year and have not had the same experiences as others? We have been able to live stream since the get-go. Not every district has been able to do that. There are some districts across the country that have not had students in school at all, and this is obviously a federal requirement and there is a major question of equity in a lot of different circumstances and some impacts us directly, some may impact others more so, but I think there has to be some thought put into how New York State handles the situation. And I do trust that the Commissioner and her staff are gonna address this in the most prudent manner possible. It does look like, for example, the regions exams this year may not be required as exit criteria, meaning that they will not be required for students to graduate. And this has to be memorialized by the Board of Regents and they will discuss this at length in during the next set of meetings held approximately two weeks from now. Our kindergarten and universal pre-kindergarten processes are underway. And I would also, I would be remiss if I didn't throw out a big thank you to our winter coaches and athletic staff. This was a challenge, obviously, the first time this had been attempted since the pandemic began, almost a year ago today. But with the testing that we had been able to bring in, coaches, student athletes, thank you to all of them for making this work. We did have some setbacks. They handled them professionally with class and humility and did not get rejected. Something didn't go as we would have liked it to go. But just kudos to the kids, kudos to the coaches, kudos to Mrs. McCarthy and then Mr. Hoops and all involved in the athletic process because honestly, it worked out, it worked out a lot better than many thought it would and I'm just proud of all of them for the efforts that they put in. And I think the rest of the items will be discussed during our presentation shortly.
You know, what's happening with the AP exams? I know that kids are asked.
AP exams, as far as I know, are on a schedule. There will be a couple of different administrations and there will be remote versions. There will be live versions, like how exactly that's going to work. But we had some issues with the college board last year in terms of their follow-up. Obviously, we have Mrs. Almeida and Mr. Cusack and the staff at the high school on top of this, but a lot of this is in the college board's hands at this point. We will be as in touch with them as we possibly can to make sure whatever is laid out, that it is implemented with integrity for our kids.
And just speaking of exams, we're administering the PSATs next.
Yes, the PSAT will be administered next week, much as the PSAT 11 was administered in the fall. The PSAT 10 will be administered in the same manner. The only students, and thank you for reminding me, Mr. Cusack, you know this as well, the only kids who will be in the building, the date is, Mr. Cusack, you're unmuted.
It's 11.
The 11.
March 11th, the only students in the building on that day will be those who are taking the PSAT 10. It is the entire grade level. All others will be remote that day.
The tech programs will be in person as well and transportation is running for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All tech programs attending.
Except the 11 graders who are taking the PSAT. Alright, so that brings us to our first public commentary. The rules of our public commentary are that the first speakers are to keep their comments to the topics that are listed for items for discussion and action, which you can see listed on the agenda, are a lot of board policies, student commendations, and the valedictorian and salutatorian. Board policies, that's it. So if time remains at the end of that period, then you can speak on another topic. Only residents and employees are permitted to speak at public commentary, and if you'd like to speak, please raise your electronic hand.
Before we get to that, just a quick mention, like you just reminded me, I did not mention it and should have, because they are not on our recognition agenda tonight formally, but they will be, obviously, at several points throughout the year. Hardly congratulations to Grace Wildermuth and Alex Belisimow, the first co-valedictorians that Huntington High School has had certainly in my tenure here, and I don't believe that has happened anytime recently before that. But two extraordinary young people who have earned this honor many, many, many times over. So congratulations to both Grace and Alex, and we look forward to great things.
Yes, definitely. As I was saying, so if you'd like to speak, please raise your electronic hand and Mr. Polanski will call on you, unmute you, and please identify yourself and your affiliation to the district.
And do apologize, I just let about five or six people in from the waiting room while I was speaking.
Everyone wants to get to the good stuff. Okay, there is another opportunity to speak at the end, so if you think of something, you can wait till the end of the meeting. Thank you. And then I send it back to you, Mr. Polanski.
Okay, I have some help here, some friends joining us this evening, and I have to find them in our participant list.
Sort of are we doing it in just so I could tell mine when she?
So which order? We're going to start with the National Merit Scholarship Program finalists, then we're going to move on to the all eastern and all-state music ensemble selections, then to the NICE approved Suffolk Zone Award winners, and finally to the BE teams who have, it's just been announced that they have made it to nationals.
It's so exciting.
Comes as no surprise because I've had the privilege of hearing both presentations and it's just an extraordinary program with extraordinary individuals involved in it, so we'll get to all of that. So to introduce our National Merit Scholarship Program finalist, I'm going to ask Mr. Cusack the safety words here.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks for the opportunity to highlight one of our very awesome students who I saw having a little snack before. Andreas Seferian is one impressive young man and student. He has a cumulative GPA of over 102, which makes him an absolute standout among his peers. And he's chosen throughout his four, throughout his years in high school thus far, truly our most academically challenging courses that we have to. He's an intern. He is trilingual. He is a world traveler. He speaks English, Spanish, and Danish. Andreas is a number, a member of a number of different clubs and activities. He's an athlete and he is truly, truly an outstanding individual. And a very well-rounded, talented representative of Huntington High School. We're very proud of him. And it is absolutely my privilege to recognize him as our National Merit Scholarship finalist, and we all wish him the very best of luck in the final stage of the competition. Awesome job, Andreas. Thank you so much for the way you've represented us.
Reynolds, can I hear you?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to speak a little bit about our all eastern and all-state musicians.
Good evening, Board of Education, central administrators, faculty, staff, students, and community members. Tonight, we recognize our Huntington High School students on their acceptance in the 2020-2021 National Association for Music Education All Eastern and New York State School Music Association All-State Festival Ensembles. To begin, the all eastern musicians. This year, four students from the Huntington High School Music Department have been recognized by the National Association for Music Education, otherwise known as NAFME, as all eastern musicians. These four talented students are made up from 719 of the finest high school musicians from Connecticut, District of Columbia, Delaware, Maine, Maryland, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, Vermont, and even Europe. The achievements of our students represent their true mastery in musical studies and the highest level of personal and professional excellence. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, the Eastern Division of NAFME had made the difficult decision to cancel the in-person combined All Eastern Conference and Honors Ensembles originally scheduled to take place this April. This year's virtual All Eastern Ensemble experience will take place during the weekend of March 4th through 6th, this coming weekend, and will include several rehearsals with the 2021 All Eastern Conductors, workshops, and each ensemble will create a final recorded performance which will be premiered online. I would like to congratulate the following students on their achievements and acceptance of the NAFME All Eastern Festival. In the concert band, Grace Wildermuth, mixed chorus members Chloe Buffon and Katherine Eichenberger, and in the symphony orchestra, Eliana Eng. Congratulations for all of your work and all of your musical talents that you've shared with us over the years. Fun fact of the night. Fun fact of the night, Eliana, Grace, and Katherine started their musical journey together in the same dual-language kindergarten class at Jefferson Primary School. They've come a long way. Next, to recognize our all-state musicians, each year approximately 1,000 students in New York State in grades 11 and 12 are notified of their selection in the New York State All-State Performing Ensembles. The process of all-state begins each spring, where 6,500 students across the state audition at adjudicated solo festivals. Every student who earns a score of 98, 99, and 100 is recommended for the all-state ensembles. Each year, of the 6,500 students, 2,500 students score above 98 and are placed in that recommendation list. Though our all-state students were not able to perform at the renowned Eastman Theater in Rochester this December, we do celebrate along with them for this achievement. NISMA does plan to release a virtual performance later on this spring. Congratulations goes to Sarah Birnacki, mixed chorus, Chloe Buffon, treble chorus, Nicholas Danseglio, symphonic band, Katherine Eichenberger, treble chorus, Eliana Ing, who is accepted as flute in Symphony Orchestra and recognized as an alternate in the Symphony Orchestra for the Piccolo, Ella Sipel, Symphony Orchestra, and Grace Wildermuth, a member of the Symphony Orchestra. Congratulations to all of our all-state musicians selected for this year's festival. Thank you.
Our fantastic music staff and to our second-inning student musicians throughout the Huntington School District and specifically these students who are honored here this evening. Eric, I'm not sure if that's your feedback there, but I'm gonna mute you. Mr. Reynolds, you took care of it. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna take off the screen share and next I'm going to invite Mrs. McCarthy to introduce our next two outstanding student athletes.
Okay. Alright. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm so proud to announce two seniors from Huntington High School that were nominated for the very prestigious Suffolk Zone Award that is given to one male and one female from each school district in Suffolk County. The criteria for this award is a combination of physical education leadership, academic success, character, and school leadership. Although I am very impressed with all of our seniors, Jordan Fort and Charles Kiviat really stand out for several reasons. Jordan Fort is what you would describe as an ideal student athlete. She is a New York State Scholar Athlete, is in the math, science, Spanish, art, and national honor societies. As an officer in the student government, she is also very involved in the Interact and Young Leaders Club. Jordan has been a three-year varsity starter and captain of the soccer, basketball, and lacrosse teams, receiving numerous league awards. She will be attending Stony Brook University, where she will be majoring in health sciences and competing for the women's lacrosse team. Congratulations to Jordan and her family. Charles Kiviat, yep. Charles Kiviat is a quiet young man, but his teachers and coaches all say that his work ethic is much louder than his demeanor. CJ, or Clark Kent, as his teammates and coaches affectionately call him, has received New York State Scholar-Athlete status and has received pride awards in both math and English. As a captain of both the winter and spring track teams, CJ received all-county, all-long-island, all-state, and all-American honors. CJ is in the process of making a decision on attending either University of Texas, University of Rhode Island, or Stony Brook University, where he plans on majoring in secondary education focusing on social studies while competing on the track and field team there. Congratulations to CJ and his family. And on behalf of everyone in Huntington, Jordan and CJ, you will be missed. Thank you, Mr. Polanski.
The Suffolk Zone event is typically one that is attended by the two students and their families, as well as Mrs. McCarthy, myself, Mr. Cusack, and others. Unfortunately, due to the circumstances, we can't be there together at this time, but we do want to acknowledge the significance of the honor received by both of these young people. They are terrific kids in every aspect, so congratulations again to both Jordan and CJ. Okay. Mr. Cusack?
Yes.
You can probably unmute yourself because you're a co-host.
I did.
It is a true pleasure to follow all of these pleasures this evening, to introduce two groups of students who are going to share something special with us this evening. These two virtual enterprise teams, the three that we have at the high school, all three are terrific, but these two happen to be in a situation where they will be proceeding one of very few in the region into the national level of the virtual enterprise competition. So at this point, Mr. Cusack, I'm gonna let you take this away.
Okay, I think Mr. Polanski, while I'm briefly introducing, you might need to make Alex Frawley a co-host for our first presentation so that he can share his screen.
Okay, I may, let's see if I can do that for him and for you.
While you're working on that, guys, from both teams, I will be unmuting you right after I give a very quick introduction, so as soon as you see that message to unmute, you'll be ready to take the floor. I could talk about virtual enterprise all night long. I won't, because our students will be doing the talking tonight. But for those of you who may not be familiar with the program, virtual enterprise, we're in our third year of virtual enterprise at the high school, and it is a business competition. It's also a class where students basically from the ground up build their own business. It is a real-world experience for students from the inception of the idea to, in some cases, building prototypes. They come up with the concept for either a product or service. They build their business plan and then they compete against other firms, as they're called, or companies across the island, across the state, and in this case, with both of our firms tonight, they have made it to the the level where they'll compete against other firms in the nation, and that is truly awesome, especially under the current circumstances of, you know, hybrid instruction, which produces a whole bunch of other challenges. These students have done a phenomenal job. As Mr. Polanski said before, we both had the opportunity to view their presentations, and they're just outstanding, truly, truly outstanding. So you guys have really overcome a lot of obstacles and I'm very proud of you. These two firms are two of the top 10 on Long Island, which were chosen of over 130 teams on Long Island. So this in itself, making it to this level, is just a tremendous accomplishment. Tonight, we'll hear from both firms. They've taken their business presentation for competition and truncated it just slightly to give everybody who's in attendance tonight a taste of what their firms are about, and and they will be presenting to everybody. So I'm going to take a moment and unmute everybody who is in our first firm, which has the awesome name Poseidon, very imposing and very much a warranted name. You guys are great. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you guys, and then you should be ready to take the floor.
Alex, you are co-host, so you can unmute as well if that'll.
Okay, thank you.
Other than that means whoever you need.
Just about everybody. I think I have you all. If you accidentally mute yourself again, I'll find you. Okay, take it away, Poseidon.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen and then we'll get started. Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Frawley. I'm the CEO of Poseidon Incorporated. Before we begin, I'd like to proudly present our executive staff. I'm not sure if everyone's unmuted.
Yeah, I don't think Richard is unmuted.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm Richard Zawara and I'm the Chief Business Officer.
Hi, I'm Victoria Mangan, VP of Design and IT.
Oh, all on mute, Evan. Okay.
Hello, I'm Evan O'Connell, Vice President of Sales.
Robbie Harrington, Chief Financial Officer.
And I'm Ainsley Proctor, Chief Operating Officer, and we are Poseidon.
Every year, the average American uses almost 6,000 gallons of water just by showering. That's over 1.8 trillion gallons nationally that gets washed down the drain. Our team works to create innovative solutions that not only save our planet's limited water supply, but also save our customers money. We strive to initiate an achievable solution to help save Earth's most precious resource, one drop at a time. We work towards this mission through our technologically advanced Trident Showerhead. Our Trident Showerhead uses water aeration technology, which reduces water consumption while still feeling like a full, high-pressure shower. Every Trident Showerhead is equipped with a sensor which monitors water usage and temperature and sends it to mobile app. Not only does this allow users to maximize their comfort, but it gives insight into how much water they are using, as well as the cost of consuming, and especially heating the water. Using our product, a single consumer can expect to save over 1,400 gallons of water. Using our product, a single consumer can expect to save over 1,400 gallons of water per year, and a family will save over 4,400 gallons. Not only does this greatly contribute to the global water reserve, but it allows for massive cost savings. Based on the showering habits of the average family, we can predict that they will save at least $100 per year.
It came to me, it was actually a trial. I was thinking and I realized I was wasting downtime down the water by just being in the shower. And neither of them must have been able to fix it. But if you give it towards me, we created a true learned to develop unique solutions and boundaries. For one, we've successfully developed an algorithm. But Poseidon also understands the importance of special we focus our, focus our marketing and interaction with even more. This growth cannot only be attributed to our skillful marketing and design teams, but also our giveaways and community interactions.
Since our establishment in September, we've used our social media platforms to attract new customers in addition to establishing relationships with other virtual enterprise firms nationally and internationally. Over the past four months, we have surpassed 1,400 followers on our Instagram page, making Poseidon the most followed company in all of the enterprise. This sizable company brand allows customers to clearly identify our products, social media platforms, and our website. Our website was coded specifically to allow our customers an easy way to purchase our product. We have even designed 3D printed prototypes, which I have here, in order to give a clear representation of our final product to both our customers and employees. To fund our ventures, we have organized several ventures in conjunction with local businesses. These one are to enable us and the businesses to raise capital in these challenging times.
Well, my colleague said from afar is far from an exaggeration. Poseidon has seen clients all the way from Latin America to the regions of Southeastern Asia. This is all thanks to the great outreach of both our marketing and sales teams. Because of our colossal efforts, we've seen equally proportional results. The benefits that we provide are not solely economic, however. Our product does not waste its potential, provides multiple customization options and finishes. Brush nickel, copper, and chrome are a few in the entire catalog of finishes we have. With such variety in design and features such as silicon jet nozzles, which clean themselves, may I add, the Trident Showerhead suits anything that a customer can desire or imagine. To even go further in our mission, we've designed an algorithm that tracks statistics of sales, other firms, and any necessary information needed for the logistics of a 21st century business. Something that is different from any other firm in virtual enterprise that sticks to more traditional and less evolutionary methods of business. This is only the beginning of our path, of our inevitable masterpiece that will revolutionize the industry even further.
And now we take a look at the numbers behind Poseidon's success. The manufacturing of our showerhead currently costs $45,000, while our early figures show they're making 125%. This results in an astounding 64% profit margin. From November to January, the company generated a 56% growth in monthly profits. The aggressive sales tactics of the firm have proved to be very beneficial, and it is realistic to expect our monthly growth to remain high. In sum, trade show revenue will account for slightly over three-fourths of our sales revenue this year, excluding donations and investments. Thanks to these profits, the company is predicted to break even this year. Poseidon's financial success to this point cannot be understated. Every single goal set by the executive staff has been shattered, whether that be financial or otherwise. The sky is truly the limit for how far this team can go.
Our five departments at Poseidon are each managed by VP and overseen by chief. However, the chain of command is very fluid throughout our company. Our human resources team in particular has been working hard to connect the Poseidon team despite the unpredictability of COVID-19. For holidays, the team has created events such as virtual movie watching and scavenger hunting. I want to remind you that above all, Poseidon's mission is to save Earth's most precious resource one drop at a time. By donating 10% of our proceeds to water.org, Poseidon is only beginning to do our part to conserve the world's diminishing access to fresh water. We are ready to be part of the international push towards greener solutions and a more sustainable future. We will spearhead the change necessary to save water, energy, and our customers' money. So don't let your savings slip down the drain. Join Poseidon and try this exciting new way. Thank you.
Excellent job, Poseidon. Thank you very, very much. They are a fantastic crew. The Poseidon presentation team consists of Alex Frawley, CEO, Richard Zabori, Robert Harrington, Ainsley Proctor, Victoria Mangan, and Evan O'Connell. Great job, guys. You all can mute yourselves now, and we will get ourselves ready to see a presentation from our next firm, which is Hometown. Mr. Polanski, while you're making Nasa Escobar our co-host, I'll work on getting everybody unmuted. And while we're doing that, I'd like to also thank Ms. Furman, who's here tonight. I see you. And we are texting each other in the background to make sure we're in good shape. And also, I want to thank Ms. Biagi. Ms. Furman and Ms. Biagi are really, were truly the driving force of this program when they brought this a number of years ago. Probably about five years ago, to me as an idea, it was just a seed of an idea, and they brought this to life and we worked together to really put something together that's very powerful. But none of it, none of it at all happens without the incredible efforts of all the students that you're seeing here tonight. So do, do we have Nasa ready as a co-host?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. All right, let me just find everybody else. Our group here consists of Nasa Escobar, who is our CEO. I have to get to a different page to unmute everybody. Ashley Henow, who's, I'm unmuting. Hello. Let's find Gillian Luturco. I will find you. Here we go. Okay, and Christopher Machin, I see you. Okay, awesome. Allison Baker. There we go. And Margot Nittigman, there you are. I think I missed Gillian. Let me just find.
I think I'm unmuted.
Oh, you're good. Okay, great. So this is Hometown. I give you guys the floor, and it's all yours.
Thank you.
You able to share your screen? Excellent.
Good evening, everyone. Before we start, I want you to close your eyes and imagine your favorite hometown food. How does it feel when you take a bite? It just takes one small image to trigger a craving that will only be satisfied, the hometown way. Are you imagining that hot plate of memories right in front of you, but you just can't reach it? Open your eyes. We have a solution. Founded in 2020, Hometown is a unique and kind-hearted food delivery service that focuses on bringing relocated Long Islanders a taste from home, revolutionizing the way people eat and enjoy their favorite meals by delivering Long Island's most popular foods, starting with pizza and bagels, and further planning to expand. With just one tap from our website, customers will be able to enjoy any of our bundles, from the one-time purchase to the party package. During the course of time, we plan to expand nationwide, not only giving our customers the taste of Long Island, but the taste of their own home, no matter where they are. I am Nasa Escobar, the Chief Executive Officer of Hometown, and I would love to introduce their incredible team of executives representing Hometown today.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Machin, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer.
Hi, I'm Allison Baker, and I'm the Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashley Henow, and I am Chief of Sales and Marketing Officer.
I am Margaret Nittigman, Hometown's Chief Technology Officer.
And I'm Gillian Luturco, Chief Human Resources Officer, and welcome to Hometown. At Hometown, our goal is to make our employees feel like we are a family by creating a hometown atmosphere. We truly want our employees to feel like they're working from home. Ironically, since the pandemic, we have been compelled to work virtually, mostly from our homes. Yet here at Hometown, we strive to remain connected to our employees through daily video conferences, discussing our business ventures, and planning for social events. We select a different employee each month who has shown their utmost dedication and enthusiasm, which gives them that extra form of recognition to work towards. Since we can all use a laugh these days, we created the Home Townies, which are humorous awards given to employees to boost morale and enhance productivity. Moreover, to heighten goodwill, we implemented charitable events such as a holiday toy drive and a Veterans Day appreciation campaign. Finally, Hometown's spirit was exemplified in our holiday promotion called Hometown's Holiday, whereby we displayed an elf on the shelf in our school and followed up with clues to make it a scavenger hunt. And look out for our Egg Your House fundraiser coming to Huntington in just a few short weeks. At Hometown, we believe a successful company fosters a culture of warmth and harmony. And as Chief of Human Resources, it is my goal to create such an atmosphere.
Thank you, Gillian. As we transitioned to our market plan and SWOT analysis, this year we have faced many challenges, especially during these unprecedented times. Hometown strives to send authentic Long Island foods across the US to satisfy your homesickness by mainly targeting Generation Z and also Generation Y. During the pandemic especially, the online food industry has thrived and grown tremendously since many people have moved to work from home. The global online food delivery service market grew to 111.32 billion in 2020 at a growth rate of 3.61%. Although we are part of a virtual community, our partnerships with Little Vincents, Crave, Hydrant, Tate's Cookies, Sunapple, and many more to come, gives us the real-world insight in the business environment. As any new company, one of our biggest challenges is brand awareness and recognition. Even though most of our advertising is in the East Coast, our marketing team continues to expand to have advertising nationwide. The sufficiency, low price, quality, and love that we place in our product has given us and continues to give us the ability to form not only business relationships and partnerships, but also the ability to interact and make connections with our customers on a daily basis.
Hometown strives to maintain that personal connection between our customers and employees. To do so, we have specifically chosen the colors red and white directly based on color theory. Since the color red is known to be vibrant and intriguing, often reminds people of eating their favorite foods such as pizza or pasta sauce. The color red is not only eye-catching, but also triggers appetite and is useful for packaging design. Presented in our logo are two utensils forming the shape of a heart, purposely composing attention to the foundation and morals of our loving company. Though the COVID-19 pandemic has formulated limitations for this year's in-person competitions, Hometown has been able to establish a name in the virtual enterprise world through social media. In these unpredictable times, the need for companies to rethink how they function is inevitable. We have promoted our firm gaining substantial following on platforms such as Instagram, Facebook, and TikTok, allowing our company to thrive. Our website features our entire team incorporating both executives as well as associates, adding to the sense of community that Hometown aspires to present. Along with this, we take great pride in the design and execution of our trade show booths. Confidently, Hometown can say that every firm who visited us at the virtual trade shows admired our authentic and eye-catching booths.
And typically, this is where I would truly dive into the specifics of our financials, but for the sake of time, we'll move past all of our numbers tonight. I will point out, though, that we have put ourselves in a superior financial position, having already surpassed our breakeven point of $400,000. This is due in large part to our industrious sales force team and trade show representatives.
Thanks, Allison. Here at Hometown, freshness is our priority. To ensure this, each box comes with top-of-the-line FDA-approved products for your box's journey from distributor to doorstep. Inside each custom Hometown box will be a 24-hour protected insulated box liner with reusable leak-proof refrigerant gel cold packs that stay colder than ice to ensure the freshness of your product. To transport our boxes, we currently have a nine-month air and ground transport contract with brief time delivery, a VE transportation company based in Sofia, Bulgaria. A big reason we have partnered with BTD is that they are as eco-friendly as possible in all of their transportation options. Here at Hometown, we are eco-conscious and encourage environmental preservation and regulation. This is why we offer a 5% discount to all customers who return their box and its packaging to us before their next order. The shipping label is included in your order receipt. All you have to do is print it, stick it, ship it, and we will take care of the rest. This is Hometown. But you still may be wondering, there are so many other food delivery services available, and what makes us different? Here at Hometown, everything we do is different. We aren't just a food delivery service. We're an experience, and we take our customers on an amazing and unforgettable journey. All of us at Hometown are dedicated to going on this journey with you, from your first tap on our website to your last bite of your hometown food. Once you buy from us, you aren't just considered a customer. You become a part of the Hometown family, and that is our mission. Whether it's from creating the Hometown holidays to being eco-conscious and eco-friendly, we are dedicated to taking you on this nostalgic journey. So the next time you're craving your hometown food, choose nostalgia, choose family, choose Hometown.
Fantastic job, guys. Thank you so much. As you can see, they are incredible, and it's no question why they are in the top 10 of over 130 firms on Long Island. I wish you guys the best of luck in the national competition. I'm so proud of you, and you did a great job tonight. Thank you so much, Mr. Polanski, the Board, Central Office, for allowing us to showcase this tonight. Really proud of you guys. Thanks.
Truly ours. We are very proud of all of you. Fantastic work, and we know you're gonna do great things moving forward. Again, thank you to all of you. Thank you to Mrs. Furman as well, who is obviously working directly, directly with you all the time. These, these, these young people have not only dealt with the challenges that VE, the Virtual Enterprise Program, presents to them on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis, they're also dealing with the challenges of catering their presentations and everything they do to the virtual platform. So you have really done it with, with class, with, with grace, with dignity, all of you. Regardless of the outcomes, you're destined for great things, and we are very, very proud of you in Huntington.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
It really shows us how thinking outside the box can make things happen.
Now, Mr. Cusack and I have had this conversation often. This, this is this is what education really is all about. It's providing these, these real-life experiences where these young people get the problem solved directly, problem solved together, and really engage in a real-life experience that may be something they pursue beyond high school, beyond college, et cetera. So again, thank you to everybody involved. Just simply terrific.
So impressed with how they present themselves. I guess it's amazing that these are 16, 17, 18-year-olds that can make a presentation like that, too.
Beyond impressive. Wonderful. Okay, and again, thank you to our musicians, our student athletes, Mr. Reynolds, Mrs. McCarthy, Mr. Cusack, thank you. And we're gonna try and maintain our student commendations on, on a meeting-by-meeting basis, so there's, there's more to come. But thank you all.
Love good news.
Thank you. Absolutely. Absolutely. Best of luck. Okay.
Moving on?
Moving on. Budget presentation next on the agenda?
For an education meeting calendar.
Go back to, I'm gonna have to shift my screen share a few times here. Second.
I can read the.
You can start.
Yeah. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education adopts the attached public meeting calendar for the 2021-2022 school year.
Are with me for a second?
Well, get a motion while you're doing it. Have a motion, please? Sure. From Michelle, and a second from Kelly.
Okay, so here it is. Nothing out of the ordinary. Among the policies we discussed tonight had to do with the reorganization or organizational meeting, which is by, by law, regulation, supposed to be held on the first Tuesday of the new school year. And in fact, the board can change that if necessary, but it looks like it will work out for this year. And everything else works somewhat similarly. Obviously, we hope to be back to public meetings in person at some point, if not at the beginning of the school year shortly thereafter, but we do hope, again, we talked about silver linings. We will continue to to live stream even after the pandemic is not a word we use routinely any further. So we will give our
It comes soon enough.
Community members a chance to follow up and see meetings that they may not have been able to attend personally.
I guess we'll have to talk about whether we'd have the ability for people to participate in the meeting remotely. Like public commentary would probably just be in person.
Yes, well, when we get to that point, but certainly while, while the Zoom platform is used, public commentary will continue as it is.
Does anybody have any questions about the calendar?
There's one date that's tentative. That's the BOC's administrative budget vote. They haven't established that firmly yet. This is a date that we, if it does change, I'll put the calendar back on for your read option.
Back to eight thirty in the morning, right? Okay, then I'll. And I can't see you. There you are. Okay, that's everybody. Now you're fifty.
So I'm going to stop sharing here. Let's do this for a second. Desktop.
Somewhere on the desktop. Wait. That's what I thought up there.
Okay, so as, as the board is aware, I'm going to try and streamline this a bit. So we've got the ability to discuss some of the major points without going through the same number of slides that we have at this point in the past during prior budget processes. So tonight, a brief overview of what the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget looks like. And we're going to discuss very briefly a couple of the cost centers that have been raked over the coals at this point. So this is our first budget draft. Things will change as revenues change as we continue to look at expenses, as we continue to look at ways which we can manage conditions that are somewhat unique. And I'll use the cliche word unprecedented. We are thinking not only in terms of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, but also looking at this from a longer term perspective. Okay, so at the, during the last meeting in February, we reviewed completely the tax levy limit calculation. And as discussed, the number presented at one fourteen, four thirty-three, eight thirty-eight represents a one point eight five percent increase over the current year's tax levy. With that said, the board has decisions to make as to whether they want to come in at that levy or below. Obviously, any district that can avoid piercing a cap at this point is going to do so without any hesitation whatsoever. You go beyond that, you need a sixty percent super majority. That's, that's not new. That's part of the tax laws that took effect back in two thousand twelve. Just to give you some history on the allowable levy growth factors, the last two years, twenty twenty-one and for next year, the growth factor is considerably less than two percent in alignment with the CPI U. And, and again, some of the exclusions and exemptions that have been taken into account for twenty-one, twenty-two do bump that up a little bit, but it is still below two percent. And to look at that graphically, you'll notice anywhere the CPI or the prior calendar year is above two percent, the lines diverge. Anywhere it's below, they are on top of each other. That stopped me at any point. This is the calculation that we discussed at length last week. And these are the summative numbers that we are in fact starting with. So you can take a look at these. As you know, we, we tend to start at a point where a lot of what you see here in terms of increase is non discretionary, but there are things that we are definitely going to have to chip away at as we move forward through the process. But this gives you a sense of what it looks like now, what our initial draft looks like, and what a budget incorporating a levy at the limit looks like. And those final two columns put those side by side. Okay, just to give you a sense of the difference between the initial draft and the levy limit budget. And again, the board can decide to go in directions beyond those two. But right now, we are at a change in budget from this year to next year of just over four million. We have to reduce that by approximately one point seven million to get to the tax levy limit budget. If that is a choice the board is going to make, and you can see the difference in budget to budget percentage at this point, which can also be impacted by the way revenues are finalized and the manner in which we use revenues that are available to us. So the budget to budget may not look anything like the tax levy increase, depending on how we incorporate the revenues that are available to us. This little, little bit here, but you can see the allowable levy, a levy limit increase just about, just under two point one million, the draft budget levy, levy increase just under four million. And obviously, there is a gap of one point, just about one point seven five million to cover or to remove to get us from where we are to the levy limit budget incorporating a tax levy at the limit that has been presented last weekend this week. And just comparatively speaking here, looking at our twenty twenty-one draft, you can see where the tax rate per one hundred of assessed value is. We report as per one hundred. It's reported in a number of different ways, but we've been consistent per one hundred of assessed value. And each home, each property is assessed differently. So this does not reflect what a tax bill would look like. But this is a rate that's constant regardless of what your, your home, your property's assessed value is, what the changes look like. If the initial draft were to be adopted versus where the levy limit stands and the approximate tax rate change. And notice at the levy limit that one point eight five percent, that tax rate change percentage matches the levy length, the levy limit percentage increase, primarily because at this point, we have left the cumulative assessed value in the hunting, within the Huntington School District consistent or flat from this year to next year. And that's another conversation that we have to have as an administration and as a board of education. So just a sense of non discretionary costs, the types of things that we have no choice but to consider as we build a budget. Not to read them to you, but here are some prime examples. Note the item at the bottom of this list. That would be transportation.
And we know that percentage change.
That's what I was trying to do all along. This is what you should be looking at. Sorry. All right. So our, our primary challenge here is non discretionary cost categories. There, there are creative ways we can address bits and pieces of this. But if you look here, you're talking about just over ninety percent of what we're, what we're building into the next year budget as cost increases are related to categories that we have very little discretion with. And you'll note here that there is a category here that has not really been significant on this list in prior years. I'm going to get to this shortly, and that's transportation. We're looking at, and there's a zero missing here, but one point, almost one point two five million dollar increase in, in transportation as budgeted. And I will explain that in a little bit more detail as we move further into the presentation. But you can see here salary and contractual, this is not a Huntington phenomenon. This is something that every district faces, pension contributions, insurance premiums, debt service, BOC's costs, utilities, special education, transportation, these are things, these are in many ways non negotiables. These are things that we must provide. And that leaves the remaining nine point seven five percent. And not that that's insignificant, because you are talking about a hundred and thirty-nine, hundred and thirty-eight, hundred and forty million dollar budget. Ten percent is a significant amount to work with, but percentage wise, it does not leave a lot of room for some of the things that we would like to do as opposed to absolutely need to do contractually or otherwise. So staffing falls into that category and not the salaries and benefits, but additional staffing for additional programs, technologies, resources, learning resources, supplies, equipment, extracurriculars, traveling conference, capital improvements and maintenance. Obviously, among our primary goals is to make sure that we maintain, if not beyond maintain, what we provide and what we have available for our students at all levels, K through twelve. And that is among our budgetary goals is not, is certainly under the circumstances not to lose anything and in places where we can to help grow the, the things that, that our children take full advantage of regardless of the grade level.
Not capital improvements, obviously, that we make.
Some of the capital improvements are paid for through reserve funding, but some are paid for through general funds. So it really depends on exactly what we're looking at, but that is definitely discretionary. So that, you're right, this is, this, these are rough estimates here, because anything that's, that's funded through our reserve funding is obviously not included from general fund allocations. So some of our primary cost drivers this year. Transportation, I'm gonna hold that until I get to the, toward the end of the presentation shortly. Technology costs obviously have taken on a new life under the pandemic circumstances. We have to make sure that our devices and that are, we've, we've done some incredible things this year in terms of bandwidth. I don't know if there's many districts out there that have what we have here. Devices for students one to one, and in some cases for younger kids, two to one. And obviously, the software and applications that are available for instructional and learning use throughout the district. Special education placements are obviously in many situations out of our control, and we must make sure that our kids who have disabilities have what they need. Plant operation and maintenance, as you'll see in, in the slides to come. Obviously, a lot of the increase there is related to some of the unanticipated COVID expenditures. Salary stipend increases will always be on this list as well as health insurance. And just to give you a sense of, of the difficulties that we face each year. And, and listen, this is again, not a Huntington phenomenon, but budgets have not, have outpaced clearly the level of state aid that we receive. And the assessed valuation has crept up in recent years, but not to the level that it's going to help us significantly. So there is certainly incongruity here. And this reflects September enrollment. We are actually down from our September enrollment. We graduated a relatively large class. We brought in a smaller class, and there has been some movement throughout the year that brings us a little. This is the first time, I think, in, in a while where we're talking about numbers coming down in terms of district enrollment. Not as significant as most, but certainly something that we are watching carefully in terms, certainly in terms of our expenditures. So very quickly, just to give you a sense of, of two primary cost centers here. And I'm gonna do this in a much more streamlined manner than I have in the past. This is the, for lack of a better way to put it, the central administration cost center, the one thousand series, there's a number of function codes in here that cover these expenses, those that are listed. And this takes two slides here, but gives you a sense of, if you look at, breaks it down as it has been in the past, but it combines it into one slide as opposed to many, many more than, actually two slides as opposed to much more than that. Trying to get this off the screen. So for the first set of function codes here, you have your actual for nineteen twenty, your twenty twenty-one estimated actual, and your twenty twenty-one budget numbers. Unless there is a significant variance at this point or something that we do not anticipate, you're going to notice that the estimated actual and the budgeted numbers match. That may change as time goes on, particularly as some encumbrances may be released. But at this point, we have no reason to believe that most of these codes are not going to be in the neighborhood of the, of, of the budgeted dollars. What they look like in the twenty twenty-one draft budget, the dollar change, and the percentage change. All right, the only one I flag, the only function code that I flag here as something to just explain a little bit further, I'm going to move to the business office specifically. Percentage wise, not that much different than some of the other increases or decreases. But there, we moved the voting costs from another code into the business office, and that accounts for some of that increase there. Remaining of the costs. The two significant increases here in terms of plant operation and plant maintenance predominantly reflects the costs that we've incurred this year and expect to continue in terms of what has to be done. Cleaning, maintaining, operating under the current COVID conditions. That includes supplies and equipment. It also includes contracted services. Not outlandish, but the plant operation obviously is, is what's hit hardest, and that's a, a significant increase there, five percent, three hundred and two thousand dollars. And again, these are fluid numbers. We are working on, on chipping away at things that don't add to program, but there are some things that are non negotiable, especially as they relate to public health. So at the end of the day, we are looking at a four hundred and eighteen thousand dollar increase, three point three five percent across the one thousand codes, the one thousand cost center, the function codes that fit into this particular cost center. And a quick overview of the five thousand series, that's transportation. There are not that many codes here. We have gone over these numbers in the past, the huge difference here, and, and the, the top bullet and the sub bullets underneath, not significantly different from prior years. But it does look like, we have just found out from our current contracted service provider that they will not be re-upping our contract at what we have done for as many years as I can remember at the CPI. They will, they will not agree to that. They have done this to a number of districts. Unfortunately, they have let us know at the end of February, and that only resulted from a phone call that Kathy made to them. But it does look like the district will have to either go to bid or issue an RFP or request for proposal to various service providers to see what we can do in a cost effective manner for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. There are not that many bus companies out there. I am sure that our current company will bid or provide a proposal. But we are going to look very carefully at what is received, and we are going to be working with our transportation consultant to set up either the RFP or the bid specifications.
The number that you had in the previous slide, side was estimate.
It accommodates, I can tell you the districts have experienced a greater increase than that. We built in a ten percent increase because that is what we anticipate as opposed to what happened this year at a one point, Kathy, what was it, a one point four or something of that nature? CPI for, from last year to this year.
I don't know if she has anything, but maybe just on Linda, she wants to say.
I did want to ask about transportation. Are, are costs a little lower this year because sports didn't happen the way they typically would? Or?
There, there have been, there have been transportation savings because of some of the things we've not been able to do this year. But what they're doing, Linda, is they are looking, they're not looking at actual.
Looking at what we budgeted, what we.
Budget to budget increase.
Okay.
They, they, they've put us into a difficult situation.
Very. Okay.
Does there ever come a time, Jim, when we start to look at? Is it on? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Xavier.
Does there come a time where it makes sense to look at the idea of owning our own buses? And I know I brought this up a lot, and we don't like the idea. But with these increases, in ten years, we're gonna spend well over a hundred million dollars. Does it ever come to the point where we say, maybe we start buying our own buses? Maybe we start buying buses that are not relying on gas, relying on a different type of energy?
It's not, I, I don't want it to be presented as not a good idea, because I, I'm not. because I'm not, I think we have to think outside the box. I'll just tell you what my concerns are. Not that they can't be overcome, but that would require, I don't know if we could do that without a bond because you'd need not only the purchase, this is that you can't, can you wean off the contracted transportation? Maybe you can and you can buy buses incrementally, but that, it's not going to change what's happening here that significantly. But my concern is buying the buses. We need a bus garage. We need maintenance. We need mechanics. The drivers then become our employees as some of the costs shift. But there are cost economies that we realize and some things we don't have to concern ourselves with by using the contracted service provider. And I think I've mentioned, I go back 12 years. I was in a district who had a blend of both contracted service and their own and both come with concerns. But with the contracted service provider, if something, if there is something you don't like, you tell them you don't like it and it's gone immediately. When it's on your end, it, there's a little more work to it. So it's really, that transition is not easy and what you can't avoid are the facility costs as well as the personnel that go along with it. It's just, it's a major, it's a, it's a major transition. It comes with major costs. So it's not.
And insurance.
Everything that goes with it.
The maintenance cost on a regular gasoline vehicle is probably a lot more than an electric vehicle. I just see that our environment, our society is heading in that direction. Maybe even some self-driven buses. I know that sounds scary, but we really have to think about starting to build an infrastructure that can support such a system.
I don't disagree. That's just, and even at this point, those types of buses come with a very high price tag as well. So it's not, in many ways, the idea makes sense, but it's just how to overcome the financial challenges that go along with it. So, and I knew that would come up today primarily because we're looking at a potential 10% or more, hopefully less increase. But this becomes very difficult to budget when we're first now going out and we had no choice because we just found out about this. So we're first now going out and trying to solicit suitors and see who is, the players are not out there. That's the other piece of this. We lost one major company last year. Another benefit of our current contractors, they know the area. This is, this is their zone. There just aren't that many choices out there for us to reach out to. So it's really more of the fiscal concerns that I have related to the suggestion that you're making, which is by far not, this would be the time to think about that, but that fiscal challenges just aren't going to go away.
I'm wondering if there isn't going to come a time when the state or whoever will require of those companies that they transition to other energy sources.
I think that's where the, maybe some of the grants or cost savings would be as well. But right now to buy one of those buses that has the green capacity, it's like buying an electric car. I mean, you do save in the gas costs and some of the maintenance costs, but the car itself is not necessarily any less. It's probably more expensive and that's, and the buses are not quite as far along. But they are out there and this, I mean, we can start with our ears to the ground and start to look at other options. But my primary concern is getting hit with a major expense from one year to the next and not being able to smooth it or normalize it over the years.
We're going to have to pay for it one way or the other, whether it's us buying it or the bus companies buying these electric buses and passing up the expense to us. It's going to hit us eventually.
Oh yeah, but that, those are incremental costs. If we're, if we're going with the contracted service provider, those are the incremental costs that we, it would be a natural part of doing business. I'd love to say that's what they're doing and that's why they're not going CPI route. I don't think that's the case. And listen.
I think they see the market.
Listen, it's been tough. They, they, they lost money last year. We did not, certainly did not pay them what we would typically pay them during a standard, traditional, non-pandemic oriented year. You know, it would just, it would help us to have had a little bit more notice here to do the legwork that we need to do to look into what you're presenting and other companies that may be out there. So now we're, we're feed it to the fire a little bit and we've got to work quickly to put together bid specs and/or an RFP to see which, which direction makes most sense for us. And we'll get some help here, but we do have some financial concerns in this area moving forward just because of the fact that it's now March 1. And this is.
Jim, if we were to consider what Xavier's talking about, these numbers are kind of pertinent, right? So 53 large buses, 81 vans, you would need a driver for each, I imagine, right? Then some subs, then you'd need mechanics and then you'd need office staff, I imagine, to manage a program.
There's no way to go from A to Z.
No, of course not, but I mean ultimately.
Yeah. And it's.
Big undertaking.
Back to the upfront costs to, even if you were doing it on an incremental basis and you had a hybrid in place with some contracted and some of your own, you still need the facilities, you still need the staff. I mean, you're going to, you're going to experience in district an upfront cost that would not be manageable in one year budget. And that's why I'm saying if we were to do this in terms of facility, if nothing else, it would require, it would require borrowing.
Yeah, no doubt.
So that's just something to think about. You know, at this point, we would not be able to do that for next year regardless. So we're going to have to move forward in the traditional sense here, but. And again, we're looking at, this is down a bit. The nearly 4,600 eligible for transport daily. That includes the schools in district as well as others. And here are what those, those costs look like. So notice the, the district transportation services. Actually, we, we had support in that office. It's not a lot of money on an absolute dollar basis, but every dollar counts. The 53.49%, we had somebody supporting office operations last year that was paid out of another code. She was actually in a different capacity and now she has been hired as a clerical staff member in that office. So that's her salary. And the big, the big chunk here is the contract transportation. We may do better than this. We may do worse than this in terms of what comes of the bid slash RFP process. Kathy, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add here?
No, it looks like we're going to be in RFP.
Okay.
And.
Which is preferable.
Like it's down the middle. I've been hearing districts getting hit with 20% increases. So we have to figure in the middle, did 10% and see what we could do.
It's a concern.
Sorry.
Legitimate concern.
I'm just telling you about the mic.
So again, some summative numbers here. You've seen these already. Budget adoption is scheduled the 19th of April. And dates coming up. Our tax levy limit calculation was submitted in advance of the March 1 deadline. And we will continue to organize our meetings by topic. I know the meeting that many are interested in relates to instruction and staffing. That will be March 22. The 15th is an extended budget workshop, at which time we'll discuss capital projects. April 6, hopefully there will be a revenue package in hand that will help us to finalize prior to adoption.
Hopefully before that.
One of the challenges in the board meeting calendar for next year, by the way, and I didn't mention it, is the way the vacations fall. The adoption is very close to the revenue meeting. I think it takes a week away and it does give us some time this year between the 6th and the 19th to fine tune. We don't have that as significantly next year because of the way the vacations fall. This was a little streamlined, hope?
Yeah, good.
It worked a little bit better and I plan on moving in the same direction. But all the information, the budget draft is posted for all to see, including the public. And I will move the presentation up for all to see as well.
Thank you.
There's going to be a lot of tweaking between now and the end of this process, just so you know. So the idea is.
Think of a different word besides unprecedented. Hopefully we'll be moving from unprecedented to new and improved. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Just beginning, middle of all the, oh no.
Tell me when you're ready.
I'm not connected, so I'm going to have to read it. Here. Oh wait, no. Wait one second.
Okay?
No.
Have them up on the screen?
Yeah, but, oh, we're not, shouldn't there be like a resolution?
No, these are all first reads.
Okay, so then.
There's nothing on the agenda following a policy related that requires adoption. These are all first reads.
So then you're just going to.
I'm just going to go through them briefly. I did, we did have a healthy conversation, policy committee, before we started this evening. Just to give you a sense of what's on the table, I do have some of these in the hands of council and others just looking at some of the aspects of, or some of the details here, but just really briefly. Board policy 1270 absentee ballots. And as I discussed with the policy committee earlier, we're making changes to, or we're proposing changes to policies based on changes in law and changes in regulation that may, or whether it be federal, state or otherwise, that prompt changes the policy. If there is a policy on the books that is antiquated and does not reflect current law, the law supersedes the policy no matter what. So.
We want our policy manual to clear indication of what the current civil law is.
Absolutely, and it is, it could be a full-time job and I'm trying to work through it as methodically as I can. But this absentee ballots reflects a recently a change, an amendment to recent, a recent amendment to education law and regulations regarding military ballots. So it reflects a change in procedure there. It actually started last year and Mrs. Miranda is on, is on top of these things from, from the get-go. So obviously, procedure here is important. So if a military ballot is requested, this reflects the process that must be followed. Okay, so that is, it's really a non-negotiable. So. The board approved a couple of meetings back, the Title IX and sex discrimination policy. A number of our policies, even though they may not look like it by title, are proposed to be changed based on what that Title IX policy says. And this is one of them. It also, this policy was antiquated in other ways. So I took the opportunity to change to reflect some of our current practices here. So 1330 is changed to reflect the Title IX policy that was adopted a few weeks back and also our current district practices. This stated back to 2005 and needs to be updated. Quick change to the annual organization meeting. We call it the reorg meeting. Same thing there, just to reflect current district practices. 3420 is a broad-ranging policy that addresses discrimination and harassment, more specifically, nondiscrimination and anti-harassment. This has been overhauled to reflect some of what was adopted in the Title IX policy a few weeks back. It was, it was actually amended enough where it's replacing the existing policy. I do have this in the hands of our council just to make sure that we didn't miss anything. And that includes the regulation and the complaint form. These may change a bit between now and the time I present them for adoption. And obviously, I would, I would run that by the policy committee meeting first. I will likely ask for a policy committee meeting prior to the next, not the budget workshop, but prior to the next board meeting as well. Okay, stop me if.
Does anybody?
First reads right now?
These are all first reads. Again, first reads in our, in our policy, policy, for lack of a better term. The board does, there are policies where I will ask the board, as you know, to waive the first read and adopt immediately. And usually that's based on law and regulation and there are other times I want the board to have a chance to review them in as much detail as the policy committee review them. And then we can make a decision at a subsequent meeting.
Right, or also when there's deadlines that we need to.
Correct. And speaking of deadline, 5633 is a required policy. It is short, but it is something that we must do and that has to do with gender neutral, single occupancy bathrooms and requirements associated with them throughout the district. It is presented as a first read because this must take effect by March 23, which is.
I'm not reading anymore, I don't think. I'm frozen and my screen went black.
What's the matter?
My screen went black and I'm frozen on the, see me there? And this is black.
Okay. Can you use that?
I can hear you, Christine.
I'm still here.
Okay. Are we good with 5633?
You want to vote on that today?
No, because we have until the 23rd. And again, just to give the board a chance to digest and we'll be, we'll be timely with it.
Okay, or I can not be on the, I cannot be on the camera. I'll just be. Yeah, we can keep going.
Okay, we good with 5633?
Yeah.
Okay. 5681 has been amended just briefly to reflect the fact that school safety plans must now address in a very specific manner pandemic circumstances. Okay?
Yeah, keep going, I'm listening.
6469 has to do with the use of email in the district. And this is something that has, has been recommended for some time. I have this in the hands of several people as well to review some of the caveats that go along with it. But it does prescribe the ways in which district email works, what it can be used for, what it can't be used for. And obviously, as district professionals, we have to use district email for professional purposes. It comes with a regulation that does provide some guidance in terms of how email should be used appropriately. And most, most significantly, and this is already in place, there is, nobody owns an email address with an hufsd.edu tag attached to it. It is something that is used for professional purposes. It should not be used to conduct personal business and there should be no expectation of, of ownership of, or privacy of an email domain in district.
When I first opened it, I was, I was so concerned that it was going to be confusing and, and, and then I read it and I was like, it felt really straightforward to me.
It's very straightforward and it's obviously something that we would have to just make sure our, our staff are well aware of. On, most of it is in that position already, but this is something we would certainly have to make sure that everybody is familiar with.
I mean, it seems to me to be what most people would, would expect to use their national email.
Yes. Okay, and I also think that the regulation that goes along with it provides some tricks, some tools of the trade that people should be aware of as well. And sometimes, you know, the biggest problem with email in general, and I think we all know this and have experienced it at some point, is you cannot convey tone in an email. And something that we discuss all the time is if there is a risk of tone being misconstrued, pick up the phone and have a conversation because it can avoid 90%, if not more, of the problem that could be caused otherwise. This regulation related to selection of valedictorian salutatorium. You've seen, this does not require approval at any point. It is just a regulation. And sports and the athletic program, 7420, also amended based on the regulations that have changed, Title IX and the associated policies that have also been adjusted in response or adopted in response. So there's a lot of Title IX adjustment here coming in all different ways, shapes and forms. And again, nothing to approve this evening, but we'll meet again before the next board meeting just to finalize some of the changes. meeting just to finalize some of the changes and some of the replacements, and we'll take from it.
Okay. What's that? Oh, let me
You've been admitted.
But I that's why I'm going to recuse myself from the vote on curriculum instruction because I feel like I need to. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approves CSC CPS seat submissions as delineated. I have a motion. Sorry. Did I have a motion?
Motion.
Xavier, in a second. Kelly. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, everybody except for me.
Five and one abstention.
Five and one abstention.
I don't know if you needed to do that, but I understand.
I'm not sure either. I I've been struggling with it for the last six years. Let's keep doing it.
Okay, I'm asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedules 3, 5, 8, 10, 13, 16, 19, and 22.
Motion, please. Bill, in a second. Michelle. All in favor?
Hi.
And I heard I heard Linda. That's everybody. Is there anything? Nothing, right?
Just a couple of quick announcements, just to welcome a new teaching assistant at actually, she's been with us in a different capacity and has been promoted to teaching assistant. Welcome to welcome Christina Rodriguez to her new position as a teaching assistant at Jefferson. And we have also, the board has also approved this evening a leave replacement in the area of Latin on Mr. Aiden Walsh. And we are also welcoming to the elementary leave replacement capacity, Ms. Jacqueline Reeves, who's been with us for some time, but we're excited to bring her into this new capacity as well.
Great, welcome, everybody. Okay.
Yep.
Dr. Acker.
Okay, is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education approve items I through N on this evening's business agenda.
Motion, please. Michelle, in a second from Kelly. Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, everybody.
I have the pleasure of announcing a few donations. The Bender family is presenting a donation of $2,000 to credit the Keith Bender Memorial Scholarship Award within the Expendable Trust account. Thank you to them. Ms. Tracy Kellner, a community member and author, is presenting a donation of 314 books to the kindergarten students through the district. This donation has a value of $4,706.86. And Septa, who's always been very generous to us, has donated $3,084.72 to the school district to support five different grants that staff members in the school district have applied for. Thank you very much to all donations, for all the donations.
Big donation, thank you.
Good donation, I like it.
Thank you to Septa for always finding a way.
Definitely.
Okay. That brings us to our second public commentary. Same rules apply, except you may speak on whichever subject you choose. I forgot to mention before that we don't mention student names or personnel matters. And raise your electronic hand.
Have a hand?
Have a hand. Is identify yourself, I can't see who it is.
It looks like Carrie Harris. You should be unmuted.
Hi.
Hi there.
Hi, I'm Carrie Harris. I I have four kids in the district. I have a fifth grader at STEM, a fourth grader at STEM, a second grader at Flower Hill, and a UPK'er, who is like the mayor. He is. First of all, I want to thank you all for everything you do every day. My question is in with great respect to the fact that I think our district has done an amazing job of not only everything, but it's my headphones, technology and being one to one or even two to one. My question is in respect to, I think Jim and probably Xavier know best what a little bit of the work we do across the country. We're finding so many kids are like off the radar and haven't checked into school and are kind of lost. And I'm wondering if we have an idea of how many that is in our district?
I don't know that I can give you an exact number, but I
Yeah, I wouldn't imagine we have an exact number, but I don't know if we do we have a handle on even what that may be.
Yeah, and and listen, I I think the the most significant situation there is at the secondary level. And what I can share with you are the the efforts that our staff put forward there. And I know where you're well, let me let me speak to this first. The program at the high school is is as comprehensive as it gets, but the bottom line is it's not going to it's not going to help kids who are not logging on on a daily basis, not going to help kids who are not showing up at school. Those that are not, we do track them, and we do have a group of staff members who goes out routinely into the community. And for lack of a better way to phrase it, they go door to door, and they have a set number of students that they will get to each week and knock on those doors and and at least at the very least find out what the difficulties of their situations are. It has brought some students back. It has allowed us to provide alternatives for others. So what I can say is that there is no student who is just allowed to sit as not present and not followed up on. And I I think that's among the most important things that we do at this point. And, you know, I can share that Mr. Cusack, Dr. Loras, I know Dean Wilson, they are they are hitting the hit hitting the road on a daily basis to to track down some of these students. And it may be a different student this week than it was last week. It doesn't have to be somebody that hasn't been in for two months. It could be a week, but we haven't been able to contact them. They do follow up. I can't tell you that it's perfect in every situation, but I can tell you that it is an ongoing effort, and we are going to continue to do everything we can to make sure that there is not a student who is allowed to fall through the cracks and simply disappear. If you read some of the literature out there and some of the articles that have been shared on students quote unquote disappearing, we are we are doing everything we can to make sure that that does not happen here. And while it is a focus at the secondary level, that doesn't mean that we don't have our neighborhood aides and and others at the elementary level doing the same to track down students who have been out for a period of time. And you'd be surprised at some of the reasons that can that that can cause that, and some of them are different than others. But the efforts, the efforts are there, and we'll continue.
Yeah, I have no doubt that the efforts are there. I'm I'm wondering if there's ways we can help.
Repeat the last
Can you repeat that, Carrie?
I'm I'm saying I I I know that the efforts are there. I know that you are all I'm wondering ways we can help.
No. Well, and listen, if there are ideas beyond what we're doing, we're not we're not too proud to accept ideas and promote collaboration in terms of ways we can do this even better.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
If anybody else wants to be heard, just raise your hand while we have. Yeah. Any final comments by board members?
It was good to be back here. Do everybody in person.
It was good to see the kids, even if it was on the screen.
Absolutely.
I make a plug for the Finley virtual play
Of course.
slash musical. I believe it's March 26. Think. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's 26. And there'll be, I think there's some information forthcoming, a flyer, et cetera, that will be posted and shared.
Is it going to be pre recorded, Michelle? Or is it going to be
It's pre recorded. Yeah, it's pre recorded, and it's it's written, from from what I understand, it's written for the virtual play platform. And it has a funny title, and I wish I had written it down. I forgot. It's something like Awkward Auditions or something. And it looks it looks fun.
Okay.
And I think they're doing a little musical piece, too, as well.
Good, good. And I just I just want to mention that, you know, we in the last few meetings, we talked about, you know, getting more kids active and doing things. And I think on this agenda tonight, we took steps towards that with, you know, adding certain things. And and so I think you'll all see more activities, more engagement for our students coming forward.
Yeah, it's been tough. And then this is like, I think where Paris was going as well. This is a tough situation for the kids, a tough situation for the staff. Everybody is working extraordinarily hard. This was a chance for us to showcase some of the things that you may not know are happening to the degree that they're happening, and some of the things that that we've been able to to a certain degree, overcome challenges as they relate to those activities. But that doesn't mean that this is over, and that doesn't mean we can necessarily let our guard down and not take care of these kids to the best of our abilities. But the activities do make a difference for them.
But we've learned a lot. I mean, we've learned a lot, and we and so now that's why, you know, people wonder, well, why can we do it now, but we couldn't do it before? And really, it's because we've learned a lot, and we've and we and we've developed methods and practices and habits that are allowing us to move a little bit forward.
And we can say in a lot of different circumstances, many circumstances, that if we do then what we do now, we are we are working through things in the most comprehensive manner that we can. And obviously, if things continue and we move into next year with some similar challenges, there are things that we're going to look at doing a little bit differently. There were things that I didn't think would work out as well that that did. And I can I can tell you that I use the the winter sports as an example. You know, we we had some setbacks, but, you know, in retrospect, it worked. It worked with the kids, it worked with the staff, it gave some it gave them something to sink their teeth into. And I will tell you, and this this goes without saying at this point, because I've seen it since September, if you ask the kids for these activities by doing what's needed to protect public health, they do it, and they do it very well.
Right.
Sometimes better than than people on the outside. They will. They they will come to you and say, tell us what you need us to do, and we will make it work. And like, give them and 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 our staff and everybody involved all the credit in the world for that, because they're making they're helping to make things work. It doesn't have to doesn't have to work out that well, but it does, because everybody understands how important it is to do what's needed.
Right. I think it's going to be exciting moving into the spring with the thaw and seeing when we pull up to the high school or to any school, really, to see kids outside doing the things that, you know, they enjoy doing, even though it'll look a little different. You know, to pull up and see the marching band rehearsing or the football team on the field, I think will be exciting.
Modified sports are are starting up for the first time, which presents its own challenge.
Modified in a different way.
We are going to continue our athlete testing, and that has that has worked out. It's telling us what we need to know. And if there's a problem, it's letting us know it. It's letting us know it's there before it it happens. And we've had issues on our side, we've had issues on opponent's sides. But testing is there for a reason, and it does stop things in their tracks before it becomes something that's
That was corrected. Someone messaged me. The 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 Finley play, virtual play is March 25. I was close. Thursday, March 25.
And the high school is going to the live stream.
Oh, it hasn't been announced yet, so that's why I wasn't saying that's why I didn't say anything. Okay, so emotions are down. Oh, I see Xavier and Michelle, so that would be a motion in a second. All in favor? Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Night all. Thanks, Linda.
Good night. Thank you, guys.